I'm calling to all of this meeting of the Silver City Town Council. Would you please join us in a pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everybody here this evening. The first item that I have on the agenda is changes to the agenda. Councilor Bettison?
Please, Mayor. I move to change 11E under new business to approval/disapproval of canceling the next regular town council meeting scheduled for September 25th.
Okay. Do we have a second for that change?
I have a second.
Councilor Ray? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed name? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is council comments. Councilor Kano?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have two short things. First of all, I'd just like to tell Councilor Ray that I'm happy to see him back. I know he means a lot to the people in his district. I heard from a lot of them over the past month, and they're all glad to have you back too. The other thing is, I, myself and a lot of residents in Silver City, joined with the town of Baird in, or I think it's their town, in mourning the fact that one of their councillors has passed away on Saturday. Zeke Santa Maria, who served for 17 years on the council in Baird, passed away after a long illness. And so I just wanted to extend some condolences to his family and his loved ones, and also to the community of Baird. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks to the public who asked me to come back. I had numerous people come back, ask me to come back. And not just the people, but my fellow people here. Mr. Scavern, Alan, I accept Mr. Fisher. No, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. Anyway, I want to say something in Spanish and I'll translate it in English. Nosotros estamos aquí para servir a la gente. Si ustedes tienen un problema pueden hablarle a la sensa Bellison, a la Smith, a señora Kano, and myself. We are here to help you guys out. If you have a problem, you can always call Councilor Bellison, Councilor Amos Smith, Councilor Kano, and myself. Ustedes tienen derecho a saber lo que estamos haciendo. You have the right to know what we are doing here. Nosotros queremos que ustedes vengan a la junta. We would like for you people to come to the meetings. And again, thank you. Thank you, guys. We had a little situation today, and I want to thank Chief Tortillo for taking action right away on it. Thank you. And also, I would like to ask Chief Tortillo a question or a comment. There is an ordinance in a state law of public walking, or jogging, or running on streets. Is there any possible way that you can have your department check into that? And also, I am asking to see if it's possible, from your department, to see if you may be able to give us a report as to how many people are stopped in texting, and driving at the same time? And how many people are stopped riding bicycles, then not stopped on stop signs? For the world. We have here a, we've done here at the city councils that we have, not just here at the town council, but throughout the community, bi locally and e locally. Well, I had the opportunity to go to Hurley this past weekend. And I ate at Tapatio. And for those of you that haven't been there at Tapatio, go. The Weber Rancheros are excellent. And they're only $6.95. It's got a heck of a good atmosphere. A very good atmosphere. There's an old saying here, and I think this applies to us as well as Americans. When the power of love overcomes the love of power, then we will know peace. And I want to thank these guys for letting us go as far as we did with the NOI. You can't always get what you want, but if you try sometimes, you might just get what you need. And now, I have another comment here. And this pertains to the NFL, the football. As much as I love football, but I think it's a disgrace, maybe being a veteran, and a lot of veterans out here, that these people do not want to stand for the National Anthem. They want to kneel for the National Anthem. I am not going to watch football as much as I love it. I hope people take the same thing also. It's a very big disgrace for the veteran. And I hope that we can enjoy a moment of silence sometime during the meeting, tonight's meeting for September 11th.
Thank you, Councilor Ray. Councilor Amos Smith?
Councilor, I'm so glad you're back. And I believe there are two councillors up here who just celebrated some birthdays, so happy birthday, happy birthday. And I went by the public safety building today where the fire and the police are, and they put out flags on the lawn. It's quite moving. I don't know if you saw it, but it was, it was very moving. I have four things that I want to say to the folks here. First of all, I had the pleasure today of meeting with some folks from the state New Mexico Main Street who were down. And I just want to acknowledge again what great partnerships our Main Street program has developed. And I'm about the work that they have done. I know that we just finished in the town hosting the New Mexico Native Plant Society. And it was fabulous to see all those folks going around. And upcoming will be the Gila River Festival. So, all kinds of stuff that's important to our area is going on, and I encourage you to make use of it. The last thing I want to say is I want to say thank you to all of the citizens who attended the conversation with the councillor that I had about the NOI that I am working on regarding the keeping of the peace in Silver City. That NOI is not going to come back until probably the first meeting in October, but I want to let you know I'm working diligently on you. I received interesting and useful information from that meeting, as well as having a number of conversations with other citizens who've given me a lot of useful information. And I'm taking it all into account. So, I just want to thank you for participating in local government.
Thank you. Councilor Bettison?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilor Ray? I'm so happy that you've returned.
So am I.
Thanks, I'm glad. Happy belated birthday to Councilor Kano. We were the two that celebrated this weekend. Milestone birthdays, but we won't have to talk about the age. And we'll just leave that alone for right now. I wanted to let folks know that I heard found Jamie Embick at the Community Development Department several weeks ago, or a little less than two weeks ago, that that dial corporation is going to put a billboard with a phone number for people to call for leasing information and updates at the site. And I'm hoping that when they place it at the site, that it's somewhere visible, since one of the things I needed to mention was, a lot of people that live in District 1 in that area are having a really hard time getting out to go to work because there's so much traffic from the other construction going on that you can't get out for about, it took me 15 minutes one morning just to get out on Swan. And then, everybody's streaming down and around and then coming through. So hopefully, if they put the billboard up, it's where people can see it without, like, you know, stopping on 180. Because there's no way to get close to the site right now, except for on weekends if they do take the barriers down on Juniper. So I would just ask them, Alex, that they do something where people can see it, and it's not a hazard for driving. And this way they can get some of that roadwork done that they're doing in that area, which is probably laying in pipe or something, is what it looks like. Yeah. I think that the folks in District 1 in that area will be happier because a lot of people have been using, you know, Pactis and Yucca. But that's because Swan is so busy, everything going over in Councilor Kano's district, that what's going on is that people think, "Oh, I'm going to cut through", and then they realize that they can't do anymore because there's already back, you know, folks from that area that can't get out onto Swan unless they go all the way up and go to the stop sign. It's, you know, where the four-way stop is. So just, you know, it's just a little, a little, a number of phone calls about that situation. And I know that, and I always say, "Look, this is a very good thing, this senior affordable living." Remember, it's for 62 and older. So if you're interested in it, keep an eye out for the billboard. And certainly, anytime I have information, I will announce it. And I'm sure that you, all the other council members will be notified so you can call them as well. Because I keep getting emails, and so I try to announce it. So Ben, and everybody over here from the press, Roger, if you could just make sure and say that there should be a billboard put up with the leasing information. And if they have any questions, until that billboard is put up, they can always call Jamie Embick at the Community Development Department. That's where you're going to get the most up-to-date information on what's going on on senior affordable housing that everybody is eager to get into. Is there anything I need to, Robert, is there something I need to? Okay, I just, I forgot something. So I also wanted to say that I was so honored to be able to announce at the annual conference that our mayor received his certified municipal official. I'd already announced that before, but he actually received the plaque and he received everything at the event. So I did a big shout-out to him. And I also did a big shout-out to John Mopess, who was the mayor of the town of Silver City during '79 and '80 when he was the president of the New Mexico Municipal League. That is the last time we've had a president from Silver City, or even from this area, from the New Mexico Municipal League. And I'm not sure if the mayor wants to say something, but I'm very honored to tell you that I was elected unanimously as the president-elect for the Municipal League. And I want to thank the council for their support of my doing that. It's really, it's an incredible honor, and I will serve you well in our municipality, as well as the money district, and everyone else out here in southwest New Mexico. We really, really need to be known for doing, you know, for what we need in our area, and not just what's needed up north. And to that, I wanted to mention that filling the one-year term is Javier Pareja, the mayor of Sunland Park. So we now have more folks from the southern tier on the New Mexico Municipal League Board of Directors, along with Mayor Nora Brasa from Vaca. It's a wonderful thing. And then Dave Venepoel was elected treasurer. So it's nice to have this sort of powerhouse group of people, making sure that it's not just all about I-40 and North, that it's about all of the state across the whole thing. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Does the council have any additional comments? Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I have to mention also that we were invited to a birthday party this past weekend. And we all sang "Happy Birthday" to Rupi Kano. And the food was great. The music was great. And my District 3, or our District 3 Charter Day is coming up. And it's coming up on September 29th. And we're not going to party. We're not going to party hearty, and I'll let Mr. Staley announce it when he comes up here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Ray. We have met with Mr. Marshall and myself and Mr. Ray, and have decided that the best project that we can do for the Civic Volunteer Day would be to do a project at Capilla Park. The park includes not only the area where the Little Chapel is, but all of the areas south of that underneath the senior citizens. As YCC groups, we had constructed that park a number of years ago. And as we walked it, there's just an awfully lot of work. It's probably the most beautiful natural park in the town. And so what we're asking, we're going to meet at 8:00 in the morning on the Saturday of the 29th. And we're going to wheat-trim a lot of that area, clean the benches and the tables out. And it's without the rains. It's just really grown up a lot. So if those of you who would like to join us, bring your wheat runners and all your safety equipment for using that kind of equipment. It will be a day of work, but we're also going to ask Mr. Brown if we can have some refreshment funds from the town. I've never been today, and I forgot to ask him that. Okay, so I'll do it in public here. So please come join us. This will be the final civic day for the year. And then, for next year, we'll start planning what you want to do next year. But any other comments?
Were you asking for a cook?
What?
Were you asking for a cook?
Oh. If you don't have a wheat trimmer, and you want to come and join us, and you want to be a chef, there are already grills down there. They're the grills that require the grellets, but we can borrow a couple of those grills then. If anybody wants to be a chef, and we'll count that as your civic day. You will not get arrested for that. Thank you. From, what did we say, 8 to 1?
8 to 1, yes.
8 to 1. Councilor Bettison, you have a question?
No, I was just going to say I volunteer to be one of the cooks. I think that's what I'm going to do that night.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Councilor Ray?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Does any of the other council have any comments? I just had a couple of comments or announcements, really. On Thursday, September 20th, at the Grand County Conference Center from 11:30 to 1:00 p.m., there will be a special meeting where the town will present an anti-litter initiative titled "Pick It Up and Toss No Moss". And doing most of the presenting will be Mr. Brown and Mr. Marshall. And we'd like to invite the general public to attend to find out how the town wants to partner with the community in trying to help with the alleviate some of our litter issues around. We'll also talk about a plan to address the uncovered load issue where people taking stuff out to the dump who don't have their load covered will many times leave a trail of debris along the road. So we'll present a plan on how we intend to address that. With that being said, I want to also thank the many community members who are currently involved in picking up litter and beautification projects. There are quite a few people around town that have taken it upon themselves to do this. Talked to one gentleman who walks from his home to the post office every day and back home, and so that's part of his routine, is collecting stuff along the road and taking it back to the trash dump, or to the trash can. I'd also like to announce that the Territorial Charter Day Celebration Committee, this celebration will be, is coming in February. That committee will be meeting soon. So if there are any community members who would like to participate, you can call me and let me know. You can get my phone number by just going to the town website. And my number is listed there under the mayor's message. I also want to congratulate Councilor Bettison for her election as president-elect of the New Mexico Municipal League. Congratulations. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the August 14, 2018 regular meeting. Do I hear a motion? Councilor Amos Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of the town of Silver City of August 14, 2018.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilor Bettison?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I have seconded motion as stated.
Okay, there are motions, second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public input. Now, some of you signed up because you're presenting stuff on a particular agenda item. So I'm going to not call your names, because you'll have a chance to address that when your agenda item comes up. But we do have others that have signed up to give public input. And the first one I have is Miriam Hughes. And when you come up to the podium, please turn on the microphone and speak directly into the microphone. Ms. Hughes?
How's that? Sorry. Here? There we go. Thank you. Is this all right? Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Miriam Hughes, Miriam Anita Hughes. And I'm here with my two sisters, who are also residents of Silver City. I was educated right here at New Mexico State University. I have degrees from Long Beach, and I've traveled extensively. I've come back here to retire because I think Silver City is the most wonderful place in the world. I've lived here for 20 years. We acquired a beautiful house in the historic area on the corner of Black and 8th Street. I also have a gallery on College Avenue. My point of contention is the abuse of the area. We claim this town to be historic, and we protect that. My dearest and oldest friend, Harry Benjamin, was so concerned about what is happening to Silver City. I think the improvement is wonderful at the university. I attend the university, and I support the university. However, I feel that there has been abuse of our historic area, and it's extensive. I came home on Sunday to my house, and the trees had been cut off past the sidewalk. A tree which was planted when the house was built in 1873. It's an adobe on the ground, and it was built for the first U.S. marshal in this area, in the territory. So it's a priceless piece of property historically. And we claim that history and the historic area is what people should come here for, to appreciate that. However, Conquest was working on that day. They have put a ganglion of wires on my corner every year. It seems like it's more extensive. Well, they cut the trees, and then I noticed that they had wire running across my backyard. And this was the Conquest wire coming across my yard, the backyard. I couldn't believe it. So I've come to you to ask you, what is the answer? How can we protect our historic area from a company, a large company, who plans to expand more and more? I'm going to turn this over to my sister Polly, and she can let you, perhaps she will more practically explain. I'm a very emotional person, but I'm sure she can be more pragmatic about this. Thank you.
Hello, Councilor, my name is Polly Hughes, and my family has lived on the corner right across from the public library in Silver City for 50 years. And we're very proud of our property, and proud of the historic district, and are convinced that that is one of the main things that finally the word has got out that Silver City has been discovered. And because of all the organizations that you all have mentioned, and the activities that are going on in the town, people are coming to see the history of Silver City. While the university is part of that history, and my confusion is, I don't, they, I guess there was article in the paper about the expansion of College Street, and the remodel of College Street. I don't understand it. All the people that I talked to when they first started said, "What's wrong? Why are they changing it? What's going on?" So we're uninformed. And then the next thing is, they start taking out all the trees, the historic trees on the north side of College Avenue clear up, that had been planted there on the other side of the sidewalk, that made the avenue driving up to the university as pleasing as it was and historic. Took them all out. What, why do they take all the trees out? They're taking out these hundred-year-old Juniper trees and other trees that have shaded the sidewalk. Okay, so then, come to find out this week, they're going to take all the poles out, the electric poles on the south side of College. They're going to take them out. Why? Why are you pulling the poles out? And so now that they've decided to take the poles out and the electric lines, there was something was sad about them putting the electric lines underground. Okay, well, Comcast didn't want to do that. And these are all hearsay things on my part. I'm just a resident. Comcast decided that they're going to string all the electric lines down 8th Street. So here pounding the trucks on Sunday, cutting off branches off the trees on 8th Street and Black Street. You should see the one on 8th Street. When you go up to A Street or something, there's a beautiful pine that's, it's a different variety of pine, and it's split in two. There's one side and the other side over here. It's terrible. It's destroyed. And that's been about a month ago. Okay, so then they put the wires in, and were asking the residents on all of 8th Street, south of College, were uninformed. We don't know. They're coming across the yard, they're stringing wires. If that were your place, if you had bought a house two years ago on his- are you left with? A property that has no trees and electric wire coming right through the half of your backyard, and what does that do with the value of your property? Property values, according to realtors, are priced according to their street appeal and to their utility easements. I don't know how much the council can do about, have to say, or if you know anything about this issue, because for the residents on the south side of College Street, we were left in the dark. And I feel like...
Your time's up. I'll be addressing this a little bit later.
Okay. So this goes up, I feel like it was invasive, very invasive, not considering the community, you know, housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list was Karen, I think, Hughes?
Yeah.
Oh, she didn't come. Next is Chris Overlock.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'll be real brief. Good to see Council Ray back. You know, this kind of an impromptu appearance, but I went down 90 and turned off at the Continental Divide Trail area where, you know, there's a circular dirt road, and I was looking for something, but anyway, I started to sort of drift off in my car, and that F-16 flies by, couldn't have been any higher than 500 feet, tremendous roar. And, you know, I've watched the discussion evolve, but I would really urge the council, if you haven't done so already, to really back up, not allowing the F-16s to be flying over the Hila National Forest. I support the military, I support training, but man, it's Chris, and you're gonna have somebody talk about visitation, and it was just, it didn't go with the setting, so thank you.
Thank you, Chris. I think that's all that's signed up. It's not actually on the agenda to come. We're in public comment, and when we're in the mayor's comments, I didn't comment then because I wanted to read into the public comment. But I do have something that I'd like to present, something I've been thinking about all day today, and something I've been reading about today. On Tuesday, September 11, 2001, 17 years ago today, nearly 3,000 people lost their lives after terrorist attacks by Al Qaeda. More than 6,000 people were injured. The images of the airliners hitting the Twin Towers will forever be etched in the minds of those of us who actually saw that happen in live on television. Also, watching the courage that was shown by the first responders on that day and days after will probably never be fully realized. The police officers, firefighters, EMTs, doctors, and civilians who ran toward the cornage can never be thanked enough. Each and every one of them deserves the title hero. And although there are many stories of these heroes, I would like to mention just a few that I've read about today. There's Officer Maria Smith of the New York Police Department, who is credited with saving hundreds of lives that day while giving her life in the process. She left behind a husband and a small child. And then there was Rick Riscordia, a decorated Vietnam veteran who worked on the 44th floor for Morgan Stanley as a security officer. For years and years, he had been expressing concern that the security was not what it needed to be, and that the training was not what it needed to be for the people who worked in those office spaces so high above the ground. And so on his own, he had regular training for the people that worked on that floor in how to evacuate. And on the day of that horrible carnage, he led over 2,700 people out of the building before the upper level collapsed. And he lost his life in the process while going back to save more. There are hundreds of other stories of the heroes of that day, but I'd like to tell one more. There were a group of strangers who teamed up to take back United Flight 93, preventing the plane from killing untold numbers of people. Instead of the plane hitting its intended target, believed to be the Capitol or the White House, it crashed into an empty field in Shanksville, Pennsylvania, killing all 34 passengers. Learning about what had happened to the Twin Towers from his wife on his cell phone, passenger Tom Burnett took it, told his wife, "We have to do something. I'm putting together a plan." Led by Tom, and Mark Binghamman, and Jeremy Glick, and Todd Beringer, and other passengers, they rushed the cockpit with Burma Raleigh and him in his last words, "You ready? Okay, let's roll." As I was reading about these events 17 years ago, it reminded me of the many heroes we have in our own community, our police officers, firefighters, EMTs, and others who potentially put their lives on the line every day to serve and protect the citizens of our community. To them, I say thank you for your service. I'd also like, at this point, to ask for a moment of silence for all of those who lost their lives in the 9/11 terrorist attack. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is reports. The event coordinator, final report by Sabrina Pack, Principal and Chief Operating Officer of SkyWest Media. Sabrina?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilors, Manager, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. It's a pleasure to represent SkyWest Media and present to you a year's worth of research that I think is very valuable to decision-making and the strategy for development of this community. So I'm gonna share with you some highlights of that research, and I'm gonna get started here. So in case you're unfamiliar with, some of our guests are unfamiliar with what we've actually been doing, as event coordinator, we have been focused on studying the events that were funded by Lodger's PAC this past year, starting with Labor Day, going through the end of July. And this was funded through a Freeport-McMoran grant. From there, when we first began the preliminary constructs of this research study, we met with county manager and town manager, and we decided on, we determined three objectives that were very important for this research study. We wanted to know who was coming, so we wanted to do visitor profile, we wanted to understand the demographics, their psychographics, and the behavioral pattern. We wanted to understand more about visitor perceptions, and we also wanted to have a better understanding of the direct impact economically by these events. So these three objectives then led us to doing additional secondary research that included looking at tourism trends, any other data that had been collected. We focused on New Mexico and other small markets. We took a look at regional branding needs, and we started tracking the available Airbnb and VRBO units. We did keyword tracking, and we did a preliminary image survey. This is all secondary research that then would complement the primary research studying each of those events. In this whole process, we also took a look at what does it take for somebody who would like to have an event? What does that process look like in Grant County? And can it be streamlined? Can it become easier for someone to hold events? Because we know that events are a significant part of a tourism portfolio. So through this, SkyWest Media developed a website called GrantCountyEventPlanning.org. It has documents on there that they can use, and a flow chart that helps them to better understand how to plan for an event, and what kind of documentation they need to be able to get all the permits they need for that event. So let's go into our methodology. I'll just briefly go over this. We looked at doing a triangulation method. We wanted to specifically study those people who came from out of the area, who lived 50 miles or further. That is the typical standard for looking at people bringing in money in from outside of the community. We wanted to look at crowd density, so we wanted to see how many people were attending, and how many of that crowd were actually local or out of town from within 50 miles. We also looked at hotel occupancy. So we contacted the major providers, and we'll talk about that, and we got them to help us have a better understanding of who was coming to the events and staying at these major lodging providers in Silver City. From there, we developed a survey instrument. We did a pilot survey. After that, we implemented it the very first weekend, which was Labor Day weekend last year. We recruited WMU students in different capacity. We would pay the students or their club, and then they would get matching terms in the university. So it was a community service project that helped them with class learning research, that helped them with their different projects from CPI to some of the business marketing club. And these surveys were under the direction, these students were guided in the direction of SkyWest Media. We used digital tablets, paper surveys depending on the location, and there are also some of these events, because we were able to obtain email addresses of those who were attending from out of the area, we were able to email them the survey, so we were able to get more data that way. On the survey, these are the main points that we looked at. We wanted to track zip codes, we wanted to know where they're coming from. We wanted to know the size of their traveling group. We wanted to know how long they were staying, how much were they spending on lodging, retail stores, fuel, those type of things, restaurants. We wanted to know who they were, their age, their gender, and household income. We wanted to know if they wanted to return to the area. Are we doing great job of wanting them to come back? Are they gonna be able to come back in a year or after a year? And what did they do while over here? And if there's something they could improve, what would they improve? Or what did they like most? So these are the fall events, or these are the events, actually all the events are listed on this page, just 12 of them. I'm gonna go into detail about each of these. So I'm gonna use some, I know there's a lot of data to go through, so I'm gonna skim through this. At the end, you can ask any questions you like, and I'd be happy to try to address those. So we have, for example, I have a comparison of all of the 12 events, and we want to know how many people are traveling in a group. So you can see there, we have, these are, first column would be, they're traveling as if by themselves, or traveling groups of two, three, four, or five plus, and you could take a look and see, kind of, it gives us an idea of, okay, this group is targeting couples, this group is targeting larger groups, and so forth. There's lots of data here, so I'm gonna go ahead and go on, and some of the very interesting findings. So we look at the number of stays, which is very important. We need to know which events are creating the most number of stays. And this, you cannot, this is comparing, you have to look at this as numbers that show you for that particular event, the people from out of town, this is how many people of out of town that were surveyed that are staying that many days. So we have interesting highlights from Tour de la Hila, these are yellow, and we know that Tour de la Hila encompasses several nights. We're talking about six, eight nights. Many people were here for two weeks or more involved with that event, participants. Let's take a look at lodging providers. So this member was taken, and it was pretty much still maintained steady throughout the year. These are the major providers. These are the ones who, most of them would participate regularly, and we would contact them after an event, not always with their report, but the main ones would report. And in our overall report, we show you which ones reported, so we would know that. So we would get, we would be able to, from the data, from the survey, find out how people were staying in hotels, but also check with the hotels. And as the year increased, pursued, we got better relationships with those hotels, and they knew exactly what I wanted by the time we got to the summer. So they were able to really tell me, okay, there was five nights, and this is what it looked like, and this is how many were for that event. And so that was very helpful. And another important part here is, we soon realized Airbnb and VRBO are a significant player in this lodging community. And though it may be at first look, we may say, you know, well, you know, they're not paying in the lodger stacks, and I know we've had this discussion, but I'll tell you, from studying these events, we have been, as a town, at capacity or near capacity for lodging for a while in some of these events, and with all the contractors, most of these, for the spring and summer, hotels are telling me they're at 70% occupancy with valid event tourism. So where we're able to actually fill the need, the Airbnb and VRBOs have been able to step in and fill that need. So we attract that, these are estimates, and we see that there's 55 to 70 Airbnb locations typically listed regularly. There is about a 25% overlap in those listings with VRBO. The price averages $96.32 a night, and it seems to be pretty steady between 55 and 80 units are rented all the time. Give you just an idea. So that's the impact on lodging. Okay, if we go on into overnight accommodations, we, this is off of the survey, we're asking them, did they stay the night? And if so, where did they stay? So bed and breakfast, they camp, they stayed with friends and family, they stayed at hotel, motel, RV park, Airbnb, VRBO, or other. So some events actually attract people to stay with family and friends more than other events. Some events, they come and they stay in hotels. What I see from the data set is, the stronger the income from the people that are attending that event, the more likely are to stay at the hotels. And the events that have people interested, and have maybe less income, they're staying with friends or they're camping. Of course, I think that would be logical, but it was determined in this research as well. So amount spin on lodging, Tour de la Hila kind of skews all of this as far as being able to see all the data easily, because Tour de la Hila bridges such a long period of time. Tour de la Hila is here not only for a week, but many of those team of participants come in a long time in front of that, and they're spending a lot of money while they're here. It is a good thing that the hotels are at capacity, I mean, they fill up, the rest of hotels, they fill up the Airbnbs. So it's a good working process. This town is doing well, and they're here for a lot, and they're spending money in a lot of different ways. We'll show you more about Tour de la Hila here. So here we have, we have a 375-person sample. There's 400 registered participants, with all the support crew. We estimate about 700 participant-related tourists come in for this. And then at the different stages, we're assessing the number of attendees. So it's about 1,000 possible attendees associated with that. That's aside from those tourists that come in for the downtown trip. That's a little bit harder to count. But what's interesting about this thousand number is that 95% of them are from out of town. So this is a very big draw from out of town, and they're here for a long period of time. The result, in 835 room nights that were reported by those lodgers, that was, and 32% of those were validated by the survey, also 35% of additional ones stayed in Airbnb. So that's an important takeaway from this. There's some highlights from Tour de la Hila that have helped, I think, spread the awareness of this area. One of them is that for the first time on Saturday for the downtown trip, SkyWest Media was able to bring that live. During that live coverage, we had 35,000 unique views. We did this through four different channels. This gave us a chance to get more eyes on our area, and through different videos that we have created and different content from some of the sponsors, we're able to provide a broader view of the things to do in Silver City. So this was a big, big step. Another big step was, for the first time, KOB and KOATV, we were able to provide them packages at the end of each day that they then aired at the news at the state level and distributed on. NBC Sports came and had part of their film was done here as well. So we've had coverage in this area that I think we haven't had. This gave us a chance to get more eyes on our area and through different videos that we have created and different content from some of the sponsors, we're able to provide a broader view of the things to do in Silver City. So this was a big, big step. Another big step was for the first time, K O B and K O A TV, we were able to provide them packages at the end of each day that they then aired at the news at the state level and distributed on. NBC Sports came and had part of their film was done here as well. So we've had coverage in this area that I think we haven't had in this capacity for this type of sporting event. Another big focus of Tour de Hila has not just been professional cyclists, but has been to recruit amateur cyclists to come here. When we look at the data set for Tour de Hila specifically, we see that amateurs that are coming here are coming here more than just for Grand Fondo and Tour de Hila, they're coming here other times of the year. And there, thirty-five percent of those amateurs make over a hundred thousand a year. So just give you this, it gives us a better perspective of the type of people that are coming for these events. Okay, another big event, I think we all agree, is the Silver City Blues Festival. We have the sample, this one was five hundred and seventy. Sixty-five hundred people were estimated to be at the peak time in the park. We counted every day. We did, we did a grid on the park, we had people counting, we figured out how many people were there. Of that, about thirty-seven percent of those people were determined to be from out of town. Three hundred and thirty-five room nights were associated with this event. Our town was booked that weekend. There were also some issues this week, that weekend. Hotels increased their prices significantly. Motel six was two hundred dollars a night. We've had people staying in Lorgeburg, who would go to Lorgeburg, stay in Lorgeburg or Dimming, and only came to the festival then one day. So this is just knowledge of things that came out in the survey. One day, we did a license plate count. Counted almost a thousand vehicles. Seven hundred and fifty of them were from New Mexico, hundred and two from Arizona, fifty-nine from Texas. So each of these events where we could, we profiled where they were coming from. This will help with marketing initiatives in future, to know maybe markets that you might have missed that would be applicable to this type of event, or ones that could be developed further. Okay, Labor Day weekend events. Three major events happened last year. Geminal Show, Print Fiesta, Taste of Downtown. I'm going to show these rather quickly because I have a wrap-up slide. But this is going to show you the overall attendance is estimated for the event, how much was local versus out of town, and how many rooms were associated with the event. This was our first event, the weekend. Hotels were not quite sure what we needed. And Print Fiesta and Taste of Downtown were smaller events and the hotels really couldn't discern if people came for that event or not. One of the biggest takeaways from this event was that when we surveyed these people all over town, Geminal Festival, none of them knew the other three events, the other two events were going on. So that gave us an idea we need to cross-market, because they would have stayed longer if they had known or been able to get tickets to like Taste of Downtown. Fall events. So we have these four events that happened in the fall. Hila Blue Festival, Southwest Festival, Red and Words, every other year. Red Dot Art Fest. This last year, it was two weekends with galleries and studio tours and the Grand Fondo. So looking at these events, when you think of like the Grand Fondo pictured there at the end, eighty-six percent of those people are from out of town, where the other events are perhaps, you might say, are more locally attended events. Okay, when we have the spring events, we get into Tour de Hila, Blues Festival, and rodeo. So you can see each one of the slides is very similar, having sample size, event, estimated event attendance. Since I've already talked about Tour de Hila and Blues Festival, the rodeo, I'd like to mention, you know, we looked at three different nights of that event intently. And it's really very small, it's a very small percentage attended by out-of-town people. And does that mean it wouldn't be if it was marketed and maybe how it's marketed? It is an event that I feel that we've, as a team, feel it has good value, I mean, to be an event driver for tourism. It just isn't right now. So even though there's only the small amount of rooms there, also a lot of the contestants stay in their trailers, but I think there's potential here. All these events have potential, but there's some that perhaps have a way of promoting through tourism, of history, or branching, and things like that. Okay, so summer events, we have two. Fiesta Latina followed by Silver City Play Festival. So again, these are two very nice events. And Fiesta Latina, if you're not familiar with that, it's the second year it happened this year. A very unique event that has, has huge potential to become a signature event for our area. Just like we think of Blues Festival and Tour de Hila, Fiesta Latina brings in artisans from as many miles as fifteen hundred miles away one way. And the art is incredible. It has huge potential to be an economic driver for us. Okay, so now let's move on to the summary there. So you can compare all the events now. Like I said, you're going to see here in a second our summary of what I, how I see our event tourism portfolio now. Okay. We have spending that we collected. This data allows us to know what events, where people are spending. Some events, people don't spend any money at all, it seems like, on some things. Other type of events, they spend a lot of money. So each one of these goes through, these are all the results from each of the categories, retail stores. Now we get into demographics. So what events attract what age? That's an important note. So what's interesting about some of them, they attract Blues Festival, a wide variety, all the way from very young to very old. Tour de Hila and biking is, you know, we have, yes, we have the eighteen to twenty-nine, but most of those amateurs are, are much older. They're forty-five to fifty-nine, they're coming in a different age groups. Our Red Dot Gallery tour people were mostly, you know, over fifty-nine. They were falling into our older demographics. Different tastes, different people. And household income. I was saying the two, three big events, Tour de Hila, Play Festival, Grand Fondo, and Red Dot Gallery tour has the highest income individual coming in for those events. So interesting comments, they always could have extra, interesting comments. In the first fall set of surveys, we kept coming up with people telling us at night they enjoyed being downtown Silver City, to enjoy our dining, but they did not feel safe. The lighting was too dim, they just didn't feel safe. Came up over and over. We took these results to the town manager, Mr. Brown, and of course, that's been fixed. Never came up with a complaint or a comment again. So we didn't have a safety issue. At the Blues Festival, there was many comments about how safe they felt in the park. So you guys must have been doing a good job, because there was no one who had any safety issues after we took care of the lighting. Signage was, has been an issue, it's come up several times on the survey. Welcome to Silver City, signage would be great. How about like how to get to downtown? And I know we have lots of signs, but I think there's lots of signs and sometimes that's too confusing and we have comments about signage. And I think that some of your movements that you're doing are good, because signage is important, or the right kind of signage. We need to do cross-promotions between these events. They need to share the marketing deliverables, because these events don't, the people attending the events don't know the other events are happening. So those are some of those major comments that I want to point out, that the other things that they are attending are number, one of our number-one assets here is the Hila football. I think you know that, but maybe you don't know how much, when we survey and talk to thirty-four hundred people in a year, how much Hila football and outdoor activities here are a significant part of the reason why they're here. But we also, you'll see, in a little bit, art, history are important. So this is a model used for portfolio management, and they have talked about having, in a community, several mega events, hallmark events, regional events, and local events. As we assess whether or not, you know, where do we fit? What, how do we develop this portfolio better? You know, there's a lot of things that's listed there in the left column that talks about measures of value. So we have value, economic value, but you also have value for your citizens. You have value for, for a wide variety of things. So kind of looking at this from our perspective, our hallmark events would be Tour de Hila and Blues Festival. Next tier down, Fiesta Latina with the possibility of moving up, Hila River Festival, All of Us Pro Rodeo, the Gem and Mineral Show, so forth. You can see how, kind of how, based on our survey findings, how this kind of stacks up for portfolio. Very important to know if they're going to come back. Most people are coming back. They're coming back either within the year or they're coming back after a year, but they are coming back. How important is all of this? I wanted to bring in, outdoor research, recreation is huge. Eight hundred and seventy, eight hundred and eighty-seven billion dollar industry. We have all of this here that we can capitalize on. During the course of the year, we've tracked keywords. So if you're searching on the internet, you type in something you want to go do, we're tracking what kind of keywords are most important for our, to finding us, identifying us, what are people, how do we use these then to market ourselves? So footballing show up thirty times, thirty-two times a day, people are searching for the footballing. City of Rocks, twelve searches per day, Hila National Forty, Hila National Forest, forty-nine, Hila Wilderness, twenty times, Hila's National Monument, ten times. You can also tell when they peak. So during Tour de Hila, other times like when we have major events, if we're cross-promoting and we have that information available, you're going to see how it helps keep their stay here longer. We also want to look at, if you're looking at branding, how do we brand? What kind of things are people most interested in? What are they searching in? So on this list here, looking at fishing, hunting, birding, hiking, camping, of those campings, number one, fishing is number two, or hunting and fishing. Okay. So from here, I leave it open to you all if you have any questions for us. We're happy to answer them. We're very pleased to have been involved in this project and feel that it has hopefully provided many people with information to make better decisions, maybe.
Thank you, Sabrina. Does the council have any questions or comments? Councilwoman Smith?
I am really impressed and thrilled to see all of these data. Good evidentiary decision-making is really important to us. And I, just listening and reading through this thing, I had a bunch of ideas. And I know that our town manager has a bunch of ideas also. So I just want to thank you and all of your students and all of the folks that I saw out doing all that work this past year. It was a really good result. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Domestic Violence Awareness Month Report by Christian Duran from Aru Fujo.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, I thank you for letting me speak today. My name is Christian Duran. I am the Administrative Assistant at Aru Fujo, the domestic violence agency and shelter that serves Grants and Hidalgo Counties. So as some of you may know, October is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And Aru Fujo will be hosting four events throughout that month. So to begin, we will be hosting on October first, the Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation. That will be held at the Silver City Women's Club, again, October first, at nine in the morning. At that event, we will be reading and explaining the purpose of the proclamation, as well as providing a survivor's story and recognizing several members of this community who have helped Aru Fujo and helped against the fight against, or helped for the fight against domestic violence. The next event for the month of October will be on October eleventh. It'll be Remember My Name. And that will be held at Aru Fujo's Healing Garden at six-thirty PM, again, on October eleventh. And for that name, in our Healing Garden, we will be remembering the victims and those who have lost their lives to the tragedy of domestic violence. The next event will take place on October thirteenth, and that will be our fundraiser dance, which will be held at the Flame Convention Center. That dance will be from eight PM to midnight. And we are happy to bring in New Mexican artists, musicians, Jerry Bean, Al Hurricane Junior, Erica, and Christian Sartreth. The tickets for that will be twenty dollars per person or thirty-five per couple. So the last event for the evening month will be our Domestic Violence Annual Train, which will be held at the Grant County Business and Convention Center. That will be held October eighteenth and October nineteenth, from nine AM to five PM. And this train will be geared towards helping those in the long course, first responders, victim advocates, dispatch, and others working with the DV target population. Again, that will be October eighteenth and nineteenth. So those will be the four events that Aru Fujo will be presenting for the month of October. I thank you for letting me speak here today. And to end, I just want to express my gratitude for this community and of course, surrounding communities as well, who have helped take a stance against domestic violence and helped Aru Fujo serve this community to the best of its ability. So again, I thank you.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions? Thank you again. Next is staff reports. Ken Daye, who's the library director, will give us a report.
So I'm going to give you a report on some of the numbers that we've had from this past fiscal year, but also for the past few years, so you can see how well we've been doing. And for the first section is where do our customers live and, or our patrons? And we're evenly split between the county and the town. And historically, we serve slightly more county residents than town residents. And our attendance numbers, they have been dropping the past few years, but that has been due to the population drop that's occurred in this area. However, this past fiscal year, we did have an increase in attendance numbers. And so we're going to wait and see for the next year or two to see if this is going to be a trend for us. And probably one of the most surprising things in the, for the library has been our circulation numbers. Again, we're having a drop in traditional library materials. That's print materials, books, periodicals, DVDs, and audio concepts. That has been dropping for the last four years. However, this past year, we did have an increase again in the traditional, the circulation of traditional library materials. But what's really been increasing is eBooks and downloadable audiobooks. This is where patrons can, they don't have to enter the building at all, they can access these books from their homes through the internet and check out the materials that way. And this has been increasing drastically over the past four years. And then looking at the first two months of this fiscal year, we had our two highest months ever again, so I expect the demand for eBooks and downloadable audiobooks to really, really increase. And our programming numbers have been exceptional for us. Again, this year, we set attendance records for both children's programming and young adult programming. And for some of the young adult programming during the summer, for example, we had three programmings that dealt with gaming, which is online gaming, console gaming, and also the traditional board gaming, where one program, we had a little over forty young adults in attendance. Then we had another one, we had a little over fifty in attendance. And then towards the end of June, we had one where we had sixty-six young adults in attendance. And those numbers are exceptional for young adult programming, not just for a town our size, but for a town the size of Albuquerque. That's how good these numbers for our young adult attendance have, have been growing the past two years. And to give you another idea, and we have the room configured for young adult programming, you know, the fire code capacity is about seventy-three people. And so when we had the one event where we had sixty-six young adults, I mean, we were very close to having to turn young adults away from the program. And, you know, probably one of the more important things about the programming numbers is, you know, this is not happenstance. About in two thousand and twelve, you know, the library made a commitment to increase programming numbers. And so, you know, part of my job back then was to kind of reorganize, kind of behind-the-scenes the way that we did programming. And for example, the summer reading program was just completely reorganized. We, by two thousand and thirteen, it was a different program from the year before. And, you know, we instituted long-term planning, collaboration with community organizations, and trying to focus, you know, on the needs of our community. So again, I just want to emphasize that, you know, this has been a long-term plan for us and the numbers are finally showing that the work's paying off. and the numbers are finally showing that the work's paying off. For Internet and Wi-Fi usage, again, we set records. We are having more and more people who come in to access technology. In other words, not coming in to check out books anymore. They're coming in to use the public Internet computers or to access, bring their own laptops and devices to access the library's wireless. And this is becoming a really critical component for our community because a lot of people might not be able to afford computers or Internet access. And so we're one of the few places that will allow people to come in and with no charge to use those services. Our website statistics and Facebook, our social media statistics are also increasing. Again, we set record usage again for this past fiscal year. And so the website and our social media is becoming a much more important way for communication to happen between us and our patrons. And you know, overall, the trend that I'm seeing is that the library's transitioning from a traditional library where books were really important to where our other services are now becoming just as important as books. In other words, the services for programming, technology access, meeting room space, community meeting space are becoming more and more critical for us as the years have gone by. And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you very much. This afternoon, about 4:30, I got a phone call from someone who lived in the area around Black Street and Eighth and College Avenue, who was really upset. She said that they were running cables all over the place. And so I went over there and I met with a number of people who live in that area. And someone had the name and phone number of, I guess, the contractor who was doing that work. So I called Mr. Brown and he was going to check up on it. He was going to give us a short report on what he's found out about that.
Well, I tried to contact the person that you gave me the number for and I couldn't get a hold of him. But what I do want to do is explain a little bit about the College Street project. When you awarded the bid for the College Street project, originally, let me go back a little bit. The town was awarded funding to replace the pavement and the bad areas of sidewalk along that stretch. It was basically solely an asphalt concrete replacement project. The university wanted to partner with the town. And as part of that partnership, the town included additional items that the university wanted, which was to install street lighting, similar to the lighting that we have downtown, as well as trees and planters all along the area from the president's house up to, I believe, F Street. So there's going to be planters, trees, the grates for the trees. There's going to be electrical boxes that are being put in on the sidewalks next to all the trees for future decorations during the holidays, I guess. And the university, we've entered into an MOU with the university and they will be maintaining all of the trees and vegetation and everything for the town. Even though it's on town right-of-way, they will be maintaining it because it was their request to have them installed. Also, the university wanted to move all of the utilities underground that were above ground, which meant moving lines from PNM, Comcast, and CenturyLink. And those agreements are not with the town and our project directly. We've, our engineers have coordinated with them to, so that they could locate their lines under College Street. But as far as the work that you are discussing, that is work that was directly contracted with the university. So when you called me, it was the first that I had heard of any of these concerns. But as far as, from what I've heard tonight, as far as running power, running lines across their property, that's not acceptable. We do have franchise agreements for them to use town rights-of-way, which would be along the street, behind the sidewalk or the curb, if there's not a sidewalk there. So if they're going to work, they need to work within town right-of-way. They cannot enter private property unless they've got an easement that has been granted by the property owner. They don't have the right to use the private property based on the franchise agreement. So there's no implicit agreement for them to use private property. So I will continue to try to contact both them and the university and see what we can do to clear up this mess.
When we find out, when we find out additional information, maybe we could get an article in the paper letting people know what's going on. Because I think at this point, like us, a lot of people don't know.
Yeah, I could work with Ben and Roger and let them let us know.
Any questions for Mr. Brown? Counselor Conner?
I, well, Mr. Brown said that he was going to talk to the president or to Western and find out why they're doing it. The only way that it can be done, and correct me if I'm wrong, the only way that it can be done is they run the lines on saving property in neither people's houses or anything. That's the only way they can do it. So that's to our understanding. Is that okay with you guys? Because I did get a phone call today.
My question, can you hear me?
No.
No.
My question is, how are they going to compensate us for the trees they've cut, for our hundred-year-old trees? And you know, they can't be replaced. I know we're talking about progress and surveys and, you know, that's fine for Silver City. I want that also. But you have to take care of the historic area or you will not have Silver City.
This has to be made clear.
They have to compensate us in some way. Apparently, you say they're not going to come across our property. Well, they already have. And they've already cut the trees. And I'm, they, I think it's Conquest or Comcast, whoever they are. And they must, they must be reprimanded in some way. These companies, large companies, who are taking advantage of the citizens.
Counselor Ray, do you have anything else?
No.
Counselor Conner, do you have?
Questions are active. Dr. Shepherd, whoever it is at the university, if we could find out who cut those trees, it would be interesting to.
Well, who knows and find out where the people cut it. If the trees were cut in the city right-of-way, we're not compensating the property.
No, I'm just curious because I know that sometimes when a tree is that old, they also have, sometimes there's problems with the tree. We've had problems with other trees in town. So there may be, may be issues that need to be addressed.
Thank you.
Anything else, Counselor Conner? Any other comments? Okay, I'll let you make a brief comment, okay?
I understand that the city is in coordination with the university with this major project that was planned. I don't know when it first started, the paving project. We listed it through? Three years ago. Okay. That the design of the planters wasn't notified, we were never notified. It was in the paper. We don't get the paper. And so you're not considering all of us residents that are right the next house over from this big, major project. And so my concern is communication. I feel as though there was a lack of communication between the university and the town of Silver City with neighbors. And there was no personal letter, a letter of introduction and information and scheduling. We didn't know what to expect. I could go on about a couple of other, you know, complaints, but that's the main thing, is the communication.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, you have a comment?
It's been in the papers multiple times. Mayor, you actually walked the street, and so did Dr. Shepherd, early on in the project, and met with residents along the street. Maybe you didn't get with this one group of residences, but both yourself and Dr. Shepherd.
Well, I think the issue is that, is that we knew what the plans were.
We didn't know the plans.
But you nor I knew what this phase of the plans were.
Yes. And that's been our biggest struggle through this entire project has been the utilities. Because all of that has been them waiting to the last minute.
Hopefully, we'll have some more information soon, okay? Okay, I've got a request from Counselor Madison.
Mr. Mayor, I move for a short break.
We have a motion for a short break. Is there a second?
No, follow me.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll take a short break. I'm calling the meeting back to order. The next item on the agenda is number 10, Unfinished Business, which is the approval slash disapproval of ordinance number 1271, an ordinance to approve a lease agreement between the town of Silver City and Washington Federal Savings and Loan pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 48, Article 2, Sections 48-20, set through sequence of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code. Mr. Brown?
May I, Counselor? As I explained the last time for the NOI, this agreement is just an extension of the current agreement that we had with the Washington Federal Bank. And as I said before, the mandatory extensions of time for the lease agreement have expired with the current lease agreement, which will expire in two years. And Comcast, not Comcast, this Comcast thing is still in my head. Washington Federal has requested to extend the current lease an additional two years. And because of the value of the lease for the two years is above $100,000, we do have to do it by ordinance. So it's, that's a recommendation to go ahead and extend the lease for an additional two years to allow both the town to look at alternative uses for the bank building and the park, which includes the drive-through bank area, to look at alternative uses for the community, as well as to allow Washington Federal time to look for another site for their facility.
Any questions for Mr. Brown? Do I have a, do I hear a motion? Counselor Conner?
I move to approve of ordinance number 1271, an ordinance to approve a lease agreement between the town of Silver City and Washington Federal Savings and Loan pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 48, Article 2, Sections 48-20, set through sequence of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code.
Motion, is there a second? Counselor Ray?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second it as great.
Motion second, is there any discussion? Roll call, please, Ann.
Counselor Conner?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Bass?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item is 11, New Business. Under 11A, the first item is the approval slash disapproval of Public Celebration Permit Application and Waiver of NMSA 1978 60-6B-10 for alcohol sales near a church for the Gila River Festival Gala for the Gila on September 21, 2018, with alcohol services from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM at the Murray Hotel, 200 West Broadway, Silver City NM, liquor license holder La Esperanza Vineyard LLC,
Vineyard LLC, license number 6148100, De La O San Lorenzo, New Mexico, 88041. Donna Stevens is going to make that presentation.
Good evening, Mayor O'Leary and town councilors. My name is Donna Stevens, and I am the coordinator of the Gila River Festival. And I am here in regards to the approval or disapproval, I hope approval, of the public celebration permit for the Gala for the Gila on September 21st. And it's at the Murray Hotel. I'm not sure if you guys have questions. I've never done this before, so you tell me what you need me to tell you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, do I hear a motion? Counsel Ray?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve a republic celebration permit application and waiver of NMSA 1978 60-6B-10 for alcohol sales near a church for the Gila River Festival Gala for the Gila on September 21, 2018, with alcohol service from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM at the Murray Hotel, 200 West Broadway, Silver City, New Mexico, liquor license holder La Esperanza Vineyard LLC, license number 6148100, De La O San Lorenzo, New Mexico, 88041.
Thank you, Counsel Ray. Is there a second? Counsel Conno?
I'll second that motion as stated.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 opposed, nay, motion carries. Next item is new business 11B, the approval slash disapproval of resolution number 2018-23, a resolution to support efforts, efforts of Cori Caminos Transportation Services for fiscal year 2019. Counsel Lehman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The town of Silver City, and the Grant County, the city of Deming, and the county of Una, have a joint powers agreement that supports transportation services, public transportation in our area by Cori Caminos. And the Cori Caminos is funded primarily through funds that flow through the New Mexico Department of Transportation from federal funding. And this is a fairly new requirement to have a resolution. We had one last year. And we will have one to show the New Mexico Department of Transportation each partner's support of these important services. Now, I don't know how many of you guys have written the Cori Caminos. I periodically write it, just to kind of experience how it is with the folks who write it. One of the things I want to say to my fellow counsel, Counsel Conno, is that last year, the Cori Caminos, because of some pressure from the DOT, was looking at what they call structured ADA routes rather than on-call. And they've decided to keep the on-call until they are told that they must change it. So, I just want to let you know, they took that very seriously, your concern. The amount of money that the town is proposing to put into the pool remains consistent, is that correct, Mr. Brown? So, it's not gone up, it's not gone down. But I encourage anyone who has not had the experience of seeing how useful this service can be to do so. There are people who really, really, really need to have this service. With that, let me move to approve resolution number 2018-23, a resolution to support efforts of Cori Caminos Transportation Services for fiscal year 2019.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Edison?
I second the motion as stated.
We have motion and second. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Ann.
Counsel Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counsel Ray?
Aye.
Counsel Conno?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item is 11C, the approval slash disapproval of resolution number 2018-24, participation in capital outlay program administered by the New Mexico Department of Transportation to construct sidewalk and ADA improvements on Market Street from Bullard Street West to Pinos Altos Street. Mr. Brown?
Mayor, this is a resolution that is required to accept the capital outlay funds that were awarded to the town of Silver City. Mayor, I would let, I would request that we make a short, a small amendment to this resolution. The bold wording of construct ADA sidewalks and ADA improvements, and just stop it right there. Don't list on Market Street and the project description area, because I looked at the award, the contract that was sent to the town, there wasn't a project description on it. And from what I remember, it was actually supposed to be on Cactus or Yucca originally. And I wouldn't, I don't want to tie it to the wrong area, so because we have the control number, the C1182638, that is the most important part for the DOT, is that we're accepting that control number itself, not the project description. So, if we can just eliminate on Market Street from Bullard West to Pinos Altos, that way, if it was supposed to be on Yucca, we can move it to Yucca and not have to come back to a council to change this.
Do we need a motion to make that change? Counsel Edison?
Yucca or Cactus?
I can't remember. That's why I don't want to list.
Yeah, I thought, yeah.
We had started the sidewalks before.
It's the Cactus. That's the remainder of Cactus.
Yeah. That was originally what I asked for, but...
Right.
But there was no description on the contract.
Okay.
And so, as long as we eliminate that, it leaves it open, so we can figure out exactly which one we...
Okay. Okay. Um, okay. Should I make the motion?
Yes.
Is that fine with Counsel Ray? If I make the motion?
Yes, yes, please.
Okay. I move to, I move to approve of resolution number 2018-24, participation in capital outlay program administered by the New Mexico Department of Transportation with the following amendment, to remove after, in one, after the now bare portbait resolved, to remove on Market Street from Bullard Street to West to Pinos Altos Street. Do you want me to say that, or you just want me to say to stop it at ADA improvement?
Just stop it at ADA improvement.
Okay. Let me rephrase that. With the following amendment, to construct sidewalk and ADA improvements period.
Okay. Do we have a second? Counsel Lehman Smith?
Thank you. I second the motion as amended.
Okay. Any discussion? We'll need a roll call on that, too. Please, Ann.
Counsel Edison?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counsel Ray?
Aye.
Counsel Conno?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is 11D, the appointment of two members to the municipal library community advisory group. Current members Ted Lynn and Michael Downe have re-applied to continue their service on the library community advisory group. Library director Ken Daya has recommended both of their reappointments. If there are no objections, I would like to reappoint them to that committee.
No objections.
They are so, they are hereby appointed. Next item is 11E, the approval slash disapproval of changing the next regular town council meeting...
That was canceled.
Canceling.
That was canceled.
Oh, that's right. Of canceling the next town council meeting, originally scheduled for September 25th. The reason for this is that there really wasn't any business that needed to be done at that meeting, Ann, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, would someone like to make a motion to that effect? Counsel Edison?
Mr. Mayor? All right. Mr. Mayor, I move to cancel the next town council meeting scheduled for September 25th.
Is there a second? Counsel Lehman Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. The next agenda item is 11F, the approval slash disapproval of executive session pursuant to NMSA 1978, Section 10-15-1, in parentheses is H, in parentheses is 8, for the discussion of the purchase, acquisition, or disposal of real property or water rights. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to second the session pursuant to NMSA 1978, Section 10-15-IH, parentheses 8, for the discussion of the purchase, acquisition, or disposal of real property or water rights.
Do we have a motion and a second?
I need a second.
We need a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Edison?
I second the motion as stated.
Okay, now we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please, Ann.
Counsel Edison?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counsel Ray?
Aye.
Counsel Conno?
Aye.
Motion carries. The council will come back after we finish the executive session. The council is back in open session. No matters other than those matters included in the motion that go into executive session were discussed. No decisions was made. At this time, I will ask the council members for their affirmation of that statement. Ann, roll call, please.
Counsel Conno?
Aye.
Counsel Ray?
Aye.
Counsel Anderson?
Aye.
Counsel Bass?
Aye.
The motion was unanimous in the affirmative. This concludes the business of the town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Lehman Smith?
I move to adjourn.
We have a motion, is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, this motion is adjourned.